My allegiance to the United States of America. To do all that, which stands on nation, on God, indivisible, in the earth and dust and straw. Meeting is now in. Motion to approve the resolution for the creation of Filmon and body for ten. Climate smart communities. Task force for the village of Filmon.
Don't move.
First and second, all in favor?
Hi. I apologize, it was Doug and then Deborah. Thank you.
Motion carried. Motion to adopt the public employer emergency plan for the village of Filmon. Motion. First and second, all in favor? Post, will she carry?
Who was first and second?
We're tied, so you can put it out how you want.
Doug and Deborah, got it.
Easy. And Trish, I will file that plan for you.
Thank you so much.
And there is a requirement that it was needed to be sent to the unions to review, and I sent it to Mike Kutske. And he said if he had any issues, he would let me know before tonight. But it's the same plan that a lot of municipalities have adopted, so there weren't any surprises.
Okay.
Okay, motion to hold the annual organizer organizational meeting, annual budget hearing on Monday, April fifth at six thirty P M. The village will.
A second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Is that, is that a single meeting for both? Correct. Okay, and the public can be at those meetings? Absolutely.
Do whatever they want.
Okay.
Motion to change the sidewalk shoveling fine for violators of the snow shoveling law, section one twenty seven seven. And one twenty seven eight, two dollars per lineal foot for the snowstorms on December seventeenth, twenty twenty. February first, twenty twenty one. Any property owner who has already paid the fine will be refunded or due amount. Motion.
Make a motion.
Is that the only two storms that we find people for? A second.
Okay, we have discussions, so does this go into the future? Is that not in the motion? Well, I'm getting at is.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we have section one twenty seven and one twenty.
We want to change the law, so it's two dollars a foot moving forward.
Yeah.
Right, and I actually did ask Rob about it also. Just so that we follow the procedure correctly and change the law. I figure we're not going to have a little snow for a while, so.
Well, the fee was not in the law directly, so we need to. Set the fee at two dollars, two dollars per linear foot going forward as well. If that's what the mayor wants, correct, that's what you're trying to do.
What I said.
So we need to change that wording a bit. Or just make another motion.
Make another motion.
It's easier just to make another. Well, then, whatever made the motion has got to rescind it. No, make another, in addition to this one.
Okay, I got you.
Anything going forward.
Right, right.
So I will make that motion also.
Okay.
We'll make the motion. So let's pass the first one. All right.
All right.
So we, did we get a first and a second on the motion here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I have Brian and then Larry.
Okay, motion to change, to make, make the sidewalk showing fine for violators, two dollars per lineal foot from here on in.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
All right.
Post, that motion is also carried. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor? Post, motion carried. Good night.
Good night. That was a quick meeting.
My kind of meeting.
Public request. You want to bring them in now?
Yeah, I have actually.
Tom Phantos first.
Okay. Well, the meeting's over.
This is.
The workshop.
Tom's been scheduled since.
All right, so he's been invited.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have Tom, Jean Jablet, Susan Mitchy, Walter Gerbo, and Sally Baker.
Okay, Tom, you're on.
Okay, um, I, it looks like Mike Dwayne is not here yet.
But should we come back to you?
Uh, yeah, because he, I'm basically going to just introduce him. Um, and he will, um, present this, um, idea that's called the stretch code. Uh, so as soon as he shows up, if we can switch out of wherever we're at. Um, so, because he, he has other obligations, which I suspect is why he's late at the moment.
Okay, so you just give us a little verbal warning when he's there, when he sees he's there.
Okay.
Okay, now I have here on the points of discussion. Correspondence Peter Johnson regarding Jean Jablet's presentation on economic development. What Jean is going to do.
Yeah, she's going to unmute.
So I've unmuted and. Okay.
You're on, Jean.
All right. So, uh, when I moved here in nineteen ninety. I was appointed by Pomasman to the village centennial committee. And that was quite an experience to learn about the history of Filmon. There, it was fantastic, we had a shop on Main Street where people brought in photos and artifacts of what was here in the nineteenth century and into the nineteen thirties. Old newspaper articles, fabric samples. Uh, and so this set up in my mind the idea that Filmon was once a very self-sufficient manufacturing community with all kinds of services available here. And I have never let that, that vision of what Filmon was go. I, I have held on to that because the fact is that we have a huge asset here, which most other communities in New York don't have, and that is water power. And water power is going to become much more important than ever before. And, um, it can provide both electricity and mechanical power. And this is an unbelievable asset that has been turned to our advantage. So in, in light of that, I joined the Economic Development Committee, the group, because I really want to see small business revived in the village. And that is tax being, taxpaying businesses, not nonprofits. We already have too many nonprofits. We are in danger of becoming a nonprofit ghetto, which is a very bad thing because it, it skews the tax burden to homeowners. And it makes it so that only rich people can live here. I do, I do not want to see that happen. I want to see the tax base broadened. And so the, the solution to that is to recruit, to, to find, recruit, identify uh, small businesses that can come in here and work. And lately, I, I've become much more aware of how, uh, e-commerce platforms on the web mean that people can make things at one location and they can sell them worldwide through e-commerce and it's, it's, it's getting cheap. I mean, this is really amazing to me. So we have the potential here in this village for creating more businesses that are actually making things and delivering products that are taxable. And this is why I joined the Economic Development Committee to have the goal of broadening the tax base by recruiting small businesses. And this is not to interfere or compete with any other development effort in the village. This is, this is all about small business and investigating, recruiting and developing that energy for our village. So you have received the proposal uh, for the group. And we have learned that to be an official Economic Development Committee, we have to get the support of the village trustees. So I'm asking you to make this group official and understand that this is an adjunct, uh, 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 you know, an add-on to whatever is going on in the village right now. It's not to interfere with anything else or to compete with anything else. So I appeal to you, please consider this and let us join with the other Economic Development Committees in the state, in the county and in other villages, the, the county and the state, and let us try to explore this. We have six or seven really good members, people who are willing to volunteer for this activity, and I'm one of them. I am willing to give this my full support. So, um, thank you. And are there any questions or comments, please?
I have a question, Jean. Is it true that village-sponsored Economic Development Committees or village-recognized ones are more likely to get grant money? Is that accurate or no?
Well, this is the understanding that we have from my, the county, that we do need official recognition in order to get in line for grants and, and whatever. So it has to be official according to the village government. So that's what we're asking for right now.
And would this Economic Development Committee be able to do things like, Larry and I had talked about maybe, um, you know, interviewing some of the local businesses to find out how they're doing around COVID or what it does. Talked about, some, one of us talked about it. Um, to see how they're doing during COVID and, you know, what their challenges are going forward. Is this, is that something the committee could take on?
Um, well, I don't see why not. It's not something that we have discussed. We have thought of surveying what's here right now. We know that there are a lot of people working from home and myself included and who are not counted in, in the independent businesses of the village. And that's a new development, you know, and so to find out what, what's going on here, really to update that whole thing. I don't think we've had a proper survey since the comprehensive plan, which was, what, twenty years ago? So let's find out, you know, let's find out what the needs are and do that assessment. I think that would be a good task for the committee.
Well, I think, um, we're going to have an organizational meeting on April fifth. And the new mayor, Brian Johnson, will be appointing people to the various committees. And probably he will appoint an economic development person from the board. And that person should probably move forward with your committee if the board desires to.
Well, that's good. That's good.
So right now, if, if you can wait till I'd say Mr. Johnson makes the appointments April fifth. And then you'll have somebody to work with in, um, from the board.
Years ago, we had a
Okay.
Local development committee, I don't know what was it, LDC. And that was one of the things that I don't know whether it was Skip or Paul. At the time, I had to have a board member on that.
Great, that was, that was Paul, I think.
Because Robin, I don't think Robin was a trustee yet. I was the one, I was on the local development committee. With her.
Who's speaking right now?
There. And that's when we got the grant for Elswee Street.
Right.
That was all done under that local development committee. So what Jean is saying is absolutely true about getting money has to be recognized.
Yeah.
And that, that is, that local development committee, we disbanded that, right?
Yeah, the LDC is a technical organization like a corporation. That was dissolved, yes. But you can have an economic development person and an economic development committee. Yes, yes, like the, the village of Kinderhook has an economic development person, Renee Scher. And she does things like promotes the businesses, does the mailchimp, you know, mail blasts about events and things to try and inspire economic development. She meets with businesses that are coming in, helps them talk what they would need for planning zoning. She may be a resource as well. She's been doing it in the village of Kinderhook for quite a few years.
Right, I think I met with her when kind of all went, um, a few years ago, thinking about.
But Mike Tucker, as you've already indicated, he's, he runs the CEDC for Columbia County Economic Development, and he can be a resource as well.
We had to have, weren't we five oh?
I think so, five oh one C three nonprofit.
I think we were.
Yeah.
And then we should have kept that going just to, just to keep it, so it would have made this transition easier. We could have just transitioned that one into this.
Yeah, I think the state and the attorney general's office and everyone got away from LDCs.
Yes, they did, but.
Because they, they weren't favored, but I, I know what you mean. This, this doesn't have to, you don't have to form a new corporation, but it can just be a committee.
Those people working together with whoever Brian appoints to economic development.
Yeah, just as long as there's someone on the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds really good to me. That sounds good. So I'll tune in April fifth then.
Okay, Jane, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Skip, and the board.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay, we have Susan Mitchy.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Not well.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, I'm basically here as peer support on this group, this committee. I really hope to help however I can as a community person to bring more businesses in and, and help look for and seek viable properties that possibly could, you know, house certain different kinds of businesses that the town can use and enjoy and support people that do work from their home environment. And I basically, yeah, I, I'm just here for, to support that as well as the energy that Tom is heading up and will be speaking about soon, or I, I believe, anyway. I also really want to congratulate Brian. And I want to thank Speed for however many years of, of service and whatnot. And I'm, I'm here for anyone that needs anything, okay?
Here, Speed's been mayor for seventy-five years.
Oh, my. Since the day I was born. Cheers, guys.
Hi.
I think Michael Dwayne is here, Dwayne.
You whine, and I'm so sorry, it wouldn't let me in.
Oh, we're so sorry.
Well, it's, it, it happens, don't worry about it. Anyway, did you get all the rest of your other business done?
We're ready for you.
Your next up.
Okay, well, that's great. I'm going to share my screen now, but the host has got it. I'll enable screen sharing.
Okay, do you know where I do that?
Uh, yes, you take your cursor, you go down to, to the bottom row of the screen where it says share screen.
Okay.
And you click on it. And it should enable you to share to all. For short, share to multiple people.
Okay. I just hit that, does that work?
Well, you, I don't know, did it, did you click on share to multiple people? There we go. How about that?
Beautiful.
And you can see the screen, okay? I, I'm not putting it to full screen so that if we need to, we can jump around.
Yes, we're getting positive, we're getting claps from the, the village residents.
Okay, and I'm so sorry that, I don't know what the heck was going on, but it does happen with these things. Anyway, we're here to talk tonight about the New York Stretch Energy Code. And give you a little bit of a feeling for what it is, where it is, how it fits into the Clean Energy Communities Program. So without delay here, and I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance for more introduction, but uh, we can do that if you want later on, so as not to waste any more of your time here. So the New York Stretch Code is a readily adaptable local energy code that is based on Article eleven of the Energy Law, which was adopted back in seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and enables the New York State Energy Code overall, the, the base energy code. And always has had that, that section that says, you know, any jurisdiction can adopt a more stringent energy code if it so chooses. To give folks the opportunity to to do a more advanced code to save energy and work on their climate footprint and what have you. It's, it's not rocket science, it's based on, you know, state-of-the-shelf technologies. It's the same, the same stuff you have to comply with in the base energy code that your jurisdiction adopts. And is, uh, is, is pretty, uh, pretty standard stuff. Now, the reason you're looking at it tonight primarily is because it has a, uh, an enviable position in the clean energy communities, uh, high-impact actions in that it, it scores twelve hundred points towards your competitive incentives in, in that portion of the Clean Energy Communities Program. And as a, just a starter, it has a standalone grant of five thousand for small communities and fifty thousand for large communities. So just for adopting it, you, you get to take advantage of a small incentive that can help you uh, work towards planning other efforts under C E C. The, the New York Stretch Code is intended to be a one, essentially a one system, uh, cycle, uh, energy code that is ten to eleven percent more, uh, energy efficient than the current energy code in New York State, which is based on the twenty eighteen I E C C, you see, or hit the, at the divergence point. And it's the same energy efficiency the New York stretches as the twenty twenty-one I E C C that New York will base its next statewide adoption at. So they're not, you're not going to be adopting the, the New York Stretch for that next code in a couple of years. It will actually be one that's equivalent in energy efficiency. The New York State's twenty twenty just prepares the building industry and the market for that move with, again, state-of-the-shelf, simple technologies and materials. So it's not to be overly costly. But it does save a ton of energy in the, in the difference. And this, you know, shows you the, the trajectory of the national model energy codes, the International Energy Conservation Code that we base our codes on. As is the New York Stretch Code based on that. So it gets your community a jump ahead. Uh, lots of benefits for the communities, uh, for the energy codes and with the energy codes. It's one of the best ways, I believe the best way in my forty years in the building energy efficiency business, starting as a builder and coming up through, uh, since the seventy-nine code. Lots of long-term benefits, lower energy use, of course, frees money for investment in the communities. And, uh, you know, it's many times over been proven that work in energy efficiency and funding spent, money spent on energy efficiency stays in your community rather than leaving in the form of energy from the outside somewhere. Uh, lots of community and climate benefits as well. You know, it really makes sense to, uh, as we try to move towards a more uh, energy efficient and clean energy future, that we don't follow the same paths that the utilities took us down, just sold us more and more and more and more until, um, you know, we find ourselves into dependence in the situation we're in now. It makes sense to do energy efficiency first uh, in order to, uh, to link with the renewable energy and clean energy options available that will be moving towards. It, it does a lot to improve a community's attractiveness. Hasn't been seen so much up this way, uh, in the Hudson Valley because, uh, well, for example, if, if you've spent any time traveling or are knowledgeable of the building and real estate market in the I ninety-five corridor, you know, you know, they have promoted and, uh, had very successful uh, work done in the lead building area and, uh, and also in the passive house area for residential, which is becoming more popular in New York itself. The passive house is one of the compliance options for a New York stretch, by the way. And it also contributes to the, the durability, the resilience, the comfort of the building. It really is, uh, when I do my presentations to builders and code officials, uh, one of the first things I show them is that the energy codes are a life, health, safety code. Well, likewise is the, uh, uh, is the New York Stretch Code in ten or eleven percent better than the, our base code? Most importantly, it addresses the area where we spend, on average, as a country, uh, four, forty percent of our energy and as much as seventy percent of, of it, electrical energy. So it's a big deal. But talk a little bit about cost-benefit analysis. Uh, in the LinkedIn, I'll show you, there's an extensive cost-benefit analysis that's been done by NYSERTA, uh, showing these kind of costs and benefits, incremental costs in commercial construction, uh, about a dollar square foot and payback around ten years. Uh, and likewise, in our climate zone here, where about twenty percent of the construction is commercial related, may, maybe uh, in your town, it may be primarily renovation work to commercial spaces. But, uh, again, similar costs and, and energy payback. On the residential side, in all climate zones, on average, it costs about two thousand dollars more for single-family residential and fifteen hundred for multifamily with a better rate of return because it's a little colder here than it is in other parts uh, of the state, but on average, uh, five and a half years, and again, just under ten years for multifamily. Uh, and this, all of this, all of this cost, cost benefit data is achieved using the most conservative compliance paths in the New York Stretch Code. And conservative cost estimates as well. You can see here, uh, in climate zones. You can see here uh in climate zone five A that we're in in Philmont. That uh, again, single family around two thousand, multi-family by, by climate zone around seventeen hundred. Eight years and, and little over five years, simple paybacks. Uh, again, without incentives, which are many now coming from the um. The utilities primarily, but also from NYSERDA. To uh help make that even more cost effective. And like I said, NYSERDA has a lot of uh new construction programs and existing building. Programs uh as well as uh the utilities with. Um electrification programs. Uh incentivizing high efficiency equipment and all that good stuff. Uh, there's a lot of different res- uh residential compliance paths. Only one new one, and that, as I said or before was, or is the passive health path. It uses what's known as the Energy Rating Index, the E R I. The passive health and the E R I paths are both com- performance compliance of paths. That most communities go to or or point to developer or the builder to a, a home energy raider. To do that, I don't know if any of you are, you know, aware of what hers raiders are, but. We can, we can talk about that and and uh. Answer your questions about that at the end here. And that's about uh, it's near net zero on the residential side. Which is the goal we're going towards in New York State and in general, net zero buildings, buildings that. Eventually will use no more energy than they, that uh, than they produce. And there's also a, a software package, ResCheck. That is uh, uh, what most code officials ask for to show compliance. Well, NYSERDA has invested in ResCheck for the New York Stretch Code as well. Uh, so again, we can talk a whole lot about this in greater depth and also with your code official, but uh. Uh, a lot of resource materials have been produced to make this easier. Uh, for you and um, basically, business as usual. The game is the same in code enforcement. The numbers are just uh ten percent, eleven percent more efficient. Here's the commercial version of the tool that's used again by most. Uh, code offices, the COM check. Uh, this, this, this COM check and the RES check were developed by. Uh, U S Department of Energy, I was in on the development of both of them in the very beginning. Gosh, it's uh twenty. Twenty-five years now. Uh, and it's a, it's a great tool, it's used by the, the designers or the builders. To uh, to collect and document and uh submit to code officials. The um, all the data they need to see uh for code, energy code compliance, and like I said. There's a New York Stretch version of the COM check. As well as the RES check. And it gives you all kinds of interesting tools. Reports that show you what all our values and areas are. So the code official doesn't have to chase all over the plans to find that stuff. Reports for all the different system, systems, there's plan review and site inspection checklist. And all the odds and ends mandatory requirements that carry over. From the base New York State, State Energy Code as well. So what's different? The twenty twenty Energy Code that we're all enforcing for about a year now. Uh, been in place since about this time last year. Versus the New York Stretch. Uh, there are some improvements in the building enclosure or envelope, insulation mainly. A little bit better um, uh insulation requirements, air leakage testing. Uh, air barrier commissioning, things like that. But again, it's stuff that we're already doing, just doing a little bit better for the New York Stretch. Uh, HVAC equipment, there is, uh, there is also readiness. Clean energy red readiness requirements, both in the uh commercial. Requirement section and the residential. This doesn't mean you have to install. Uh, electric vehicle charging stations or install, that you have to install. Uh, solar photovoltaic, what it does mean is that. In during construction, when it's most cost effective, you have to do a few of the preparatory. Things like uh leave extra space on the uh, the electrical panel. Plan out a route to bring the energy from PV panels. And uh, submit roof calculations to show that. The roof will support solar photovoltaics. And, and, and likewise on the electrical vehicle charging. Uh, you know, leave space for and room to install. That electrical needs. Uh, when, when and if they want to add a uh electric vehicle charging station. Uh, there is a requirement for ba- balanced uh ventilation, this is really good news in the. Age of covid, uh heat recovery ventilators or energy recovery ventilators. That's where the, probably the biggest cost increase is, but a lot of builders are going to that to. Reduce or eliminate the risk uh on the ventilation side, what with. Buildings being tighter and people looking to be more comfortable and save energy. Uh, another question we get asked a lot by local builders and developers, well, what is this going to do to the cost of? Renovating a home or a homeowner asks, you know, what's, what's the difference? And the difference is pretty minor, it's not included in the cost benefit analysis. But the important thing to remember about how the energy code. Uh, is impacted by renovations or how renovations are impacted by it. Is that when you do a renovation, uh, the only thing that you have to bring up to code. Is that piece of the building that you're uh rebuilding or adding to, for example. If you're a, if you've got a small commercial building. Uh, like on Main Street, and uh you're taking off the, the flat roof which has. Insulation under the membrane roofing. Sitting on top of the roof deck. The, the base energy code will require you to replace that insulation. Uh, if you're replacing it with uh the minimum requirement, which would be R thirty in the worst case scenario. The New York Stretch only asks you to add R three to it, which is about. A half an inch of the typical insulation used on roof decks. Uh, during a re-roofing. Um, and likewise with additions. If you're building in addition to your home, that new addition has to comply, just like new construction. Uh, anything that's built new. But you don't have to bring the existing home or building, if it's a commercial building, up to code, just that addition itself. Communities also ask us, well, you know, can we just adopt? Residential section first and see how it works out. Or, or, you know, the commercial section only, or not have it be for renovations. Uh, and additions, and the answer is yes, you could do that. However, in order for it to qualify for the Clean Energy Community Grant. And the twelve hundred points that you get. Towards uh some significant uh incentive dollars for your projects. Uh, if you have to adopt the whole thing. Plus, it can run awry of. Uh, of, of, a quick. Uh, review that has to be done by the New York State Department of State. That administers all the other codes. Uh, if you, if you weaken the New York Stretch Code. They're gonna, they're gonna have to put it through the more. Uh, restrictive local standard process, which is long and involved. And takes a whole lot of time, so. Uh, that way, uh, if you keep it the plain brown wrapper version, you don't run into those problems. And of course, if you change it, you can't take advantage of all the resources that have been put together by NYSERDA. Um, we also get asked about third-party inspection veri- verification. Because more and more builders are going to. The pers- the performance paths like paths of house or the energy rating index. And they just are, you know, are uh assigning uh the. The builder or the developer to, or the homeowner. Uh, to in new construction, go to a home energy raider to see that um. Uh, that, that rating is properly done and that cost is borne by the. By the, the developer or the owner. And uh, there's a lot of resources to help point you to them if you want, you don't have to do anything different for. Compliance or for enforcement uh than the, the regular energy code. And it's particularly handy that uh the New York Stretch Code is, is an overlay to the existing energy code. And uh, books are in production right now. Every community will get at least one book that has everything in one book. Plus, it'll be available online too. So uh, your code official, I don't know if the code official's there, I hope to meet you if you're right there. When we get to the question and answer period, but uh. Uh, you'll like that, rather than the fishing around we did last go around with. Supplements and the Green Book and the Code and on and on. So it's, it's set up to be pretty straightforward. Uh, the, the code officials that are adopting in, in the uh. Uh jurisdictions that have or in process are finding it. Uh, no additional work, again, again, it's just, the numbers are a bit different. So on the research, uh, resource page here down in the blue link. There are a whole bunch of resources, as I suggested. First, um, there's a, a, a team of circuit riders, I happen to be. Uh, the circuit rider for uh the North Country Capital Region, which you're in here. And also in Westchester County down near New York. There's uh, an, an adoption guide and a model local law. Uh, comparison document uh that. Uh, shows you uh the, the, the track to adopting this uh yourselves. Uh, and gives you a, a model law that you can just adapt for use in, in Philmont. Um, there is training, the, the training was finally just approved from. Uh, the Department of State for uh code officials and, and building professionals. And it's assigned a, a learning unit, C E Us. So they get credit for attending, of course. Uh, those should be coming out any day, actually, the final approval was just Monday. Uh, as I said, we have the RES check and COM check tools. Uh, the versions that work are the ones that are on the web, so you don't have to download it. You don't have to have a, you know, a, a, an exceptional computer storage wise to use it. Uh, there's a hotline uh for technical assistance besides us circuit riders. And um. You know, all that's available to use for your code enforcement official to use in your community. Who's adopting it? Well, here's a list of those who have. Adopted, most of them, it's really. Uh, been in a surge in the Hudson Valley and Long Island. In the Hudson Valley, I'm probably working with uh twenty-eight or thirty jurisdictions right now. Uh, towards adoption. And the ones in red here, Bedford, Hastings-on-Hudson, the city of Beacon. Montour Falls, Dobbs Ferry. Uh, have all adopted and uh a bunch more on the way. Also, uh, up in our climate zone, uh, the uh town and the city of Ithaca have adopted. Uh, kind of their own, uh, their own version, but it's equal to the, the New York Stretch. Uses the New York Stretch as the base. So. Here's uh, here are the folks you need to know for this thing, Jill Hank, uh, I didn't know, didn't notice, is Jill on tonight? Anybody know?
I don't think so.
She's the, I'm sure that's, s- some of you know her, she's the Clean Energy Communities Coordinator. That you will work with to um, to look at the different. Action items that you can do and the, and the points and the incentives you can achieve and how to go there. Chris Groey is the project manager for the Circuit Rider Program, and at the bottom is my contact information. So, um, I really whipped through that, and again, I'm sorry I was, I was a bit late here, but. We've got some time for questions if you want them. I encourage you to just pick up the phone and call me or email me. And, and I offer to get together with your code official to walk through a little more. Details, so they're comfortable with it as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael, we, it looks like we have a question from Aleah Schneider from the Register Star. And um, but I have a quick first question, which is, is your um presentation available online anywhere?
No, but I will send it to you, and who is speaking, I can't tell.
It's Deborah, but you could just send it to the, to info at Philmont.org. And that will get. That will get to our clerk Trish. And she'll share that info, right?
For my email?
Yeah.
Clerk@Philmont.org.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, clerk@Philmont.org.
Yeah, let's not beat shortchanging the clerk here.
Yeah, that's right.
She's, she's uh missing her dinner too.
Yeah, okay, so um, we have one question that I can see, uh.
Hi, sorry, my question was actually um from before the presentation for the board, I just wasn't sure of the etiquette, so um. I can wait until this topic.
Okay, thanks, we'll get back to you.
So, are citizens only available to get this if we adopt it, if they can't get it on their own?
No. No, this is. Like when we built your house, or your addition. There's a set of codes that I had to follow, the energy code, like you had to have R twenty-one in the walls, R thirty-eight in the ceiling. Since then, they've adopted a better. Now you need R twenty-five in the walls and thirty-nine in the ceilings. And this is one step above that.
And what happens if they do that?
Um. If, if, if we adopt this set of codes.
Okay, so the, you're the in our code book?
Yes.
Okay, I got, I got.
Justin Philmont though, because not everybody around has it.
That's part of, no, part of that.
Yeah, they actually, the prescriptive requirement for ceilings is R forty-nine in the base code.
Yeah, it's only on anything new.
Anything new. The only, virtually the only way to achieve that now is a straight phone, which is every, which everybody's going to.
And if they choose not to, then they just fail.
If they choose not to, it doesn't pass inspection.
Oh, so how does that work with the modular?
The modulars have to meet. Our, the energy codes.
Yeah, we're going through that right now with Department of State. Modulars, modulators are inspected. As to what is built in the factory. And then the only thing you have to, you have to assure in, in the field is. Whatever is site-built, and then the final, if it's a home. Uh, the right, the uh, the blower door test has to be done on it after it's assembled because. Obviously, you can't do it in the factory.
The blower door test is standard to every, everything we do.
What I'm saying is, right now, it's, it's R thirty, if we adopt that, it goes to R thirty.
It's not our, it's not our thirty.
Forty-nine.
It's X, let's say it's X. Um. But the modulars, how, how, how would a, how would a modular company know that this, they're gonna have to know that this house is going to Philmont, and Philmont building code. Is different than Claude's building code.
Yeah.
Well, normally, when you go to get the building, you, you get a building before you, you buy the home. So then the building inspector will tell you that it has to follow the.
How the, um, what about windows, are, are our values, new values on the windows?
Windows are a little bit better at, at U point two seven. Um, the, the, the New York, the energy code is point three oh. Uh, generally speaking, the window industry is way ahead of the, the code, the energy codes entirely, and. Um, it's, it's again, state of the. Uh, state of the shelf, it's stuff that's commonly available, it's a little better window. Um, but it's, it's stuff that's available and manufactured today, if you look at any of the window. Sites, even in replacement window, windows, it's, it's available. The window industry has gotten ahead of this because they don't want to go to triple pane, which they're competing with in Europe. So you find some pretty good windows out there these days.
If he can give me the specifics, I can sit down with it and I can go through it. And I'll know.
Sure.
Then, then I can take it to Sandra and I'll tell her that, give me the price difference between this and what we're buying now. And can we get these? I'm, I just.
This again, that's, that stuff's all in the cost benefit analysis. But I'll make sure I get you, that, is that Ed speaking?
No, it's Brian.
Okay, Brian. I don't know if we've met before. I've, I do a lot of code training. But you shoot me an email and I'll make sure you have.
Don't hold your breath.
Uh oh. All right. Carrier pigeon then. All right. I will send all that stuff to the same clerk or info site.
There's no info.
Okay. There'll be a comparison document that tells you exactly what's different. Commercial and residential with tables that call that all out. And I'm glad to get on the phone with you sometime and just go over. So you understand what, what's different exactly. Also, I'll send you a copy of the code. It's not in the book form yet, but we expect that virtually any day according to the International Code Council. So I'll send you that as well. A comparison document. And a couple of other things that give you some guidance on, on the, the things that are different. And, and if you'd like to talk to some other code officials, if you know Dave Allen down in, well, Al Soracco, you might know Al Soracco. He's pretty active in all the Nisbok chapters. He's at Bedford and Dave Allen is, oh, he's in Hastings. I'm forgetting the guy, the code official name in, in the city of Beacon. They're in, in climate zone five too. So their requirements for both codes are the same. He looked it over and then got up during the testimony, the, the, the public hearing and said, this won't cause me any more work, but you can talk to him about it. Can I send all that stuff along to your attention, Brian?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question at Sally Baker PB Inc.?
Sure, go ahead.
Michael, so are there, what allowances for historic restoration are allowed under the New York stretch code?
Same as all in New York building codes essentially. Historic buildings are essentially exempted from the energy code, period. It's been that way since 1979.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear that from your voice.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That was my voice.
Thank you.
See my mouth moving.
I did. Thank you so much for your help with that. Okay.
My, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Michael, I have a question about CEC. I guess we need a little bit on that. And maybe you can't, you know, maybe that question needs to be asked of somebody else. But should I ask it?
Oh, go ahead. I'll give it a shot. And if I mess it up, I'll ask you to get ahold of Jill Hank. She's great.
Jill Hank.
But go ahead, fire away.
So, you know, I've recently heard that the Clean Energy Community Grant is now going again very robustly. And you were saying that if you adopt, if we as a village adopt this New York stretch code, we will get 5,000. Is that right?
Not 5,000. It's 1,200. The levels of incentives for the CEC are 3,000, 4,000 and 5,000. And the incentives of each of those levels, I wish I had. I've seen the table and I, I just don't have it in this presentation.
I'm sorry, you're talking about points and I'm talking about dollars because.
Oh, it's $5,000 for just the, the New York stretch code, correct?
If we implemented this New York stretch code, we would be eligible for that 5,000 from the CEC.
That's correct. All you have to do is, is submit the, I believe the paperwork only requires you submit whatever, however you did it during a public meeting of a vote to adopt or whatever, however you adopt laws in your community, it can be different.
We've worked with, and I started on a previous CEC grant. I think it, my understanding is it has to go to energy reduction. Yeah. It's not just, we can't just use it for whatever we want, but we could use it.
Oh, you've got to officially adopt it and show evidence that you've adopted it in local law.
So my question is, and my second question related to that is I've, I've also learned, and this is something I wanted to bring up tonight about a shared service model for getting renewable energy. And I was told that that grants people now, now I'm talking about points, CEC points. But that will get a village 1,500 points. And with the stretch code, we could get 1,200 points. That's a plus. 300 points shy of 3,000. And at 3,000, my understanding is we get 10, you qualify for a $10,000 grant.
Right. And the more, and the, and the more things you do, I don't know what you've done to date, but some of those are still usable towards the points. Have you? So a-again, that's best question to ask Jill.
Okay.
So I don't get in too much trouble with Jill. But ask soon because she's going out on maternity leave soon.
Okay.
And she's terrific. She'll, she'll jump right in and help you whatever you need to know. I'm surprised she's not here tonight.
Uh, yeah, it's Tom Pano. Jill told me she would not be able to make it this evening. But I have the chart that she sent me with the overlap points so, from, from the previous grant. So I don't have it in front of me, but there are definitely overlap points.
Terrific. So if you've done some of that, you're, could be that much farther ahead. The interesting thing is you get to the different point levels. And some of them are really easy to do. Like, did you, Tom, do you know if you did benchmarking previously?
Um, we did the one level of benchmarking.
Okay.
Um, and I'm putting in to go to the next level to, in other words, to use portfolio manager, the, the federal portfolio manager for certain structures. Yeah.
Yeah, it's most, it's, it's municipal buildings and structures. That's a great idea because the, the thing that's neat about the, the benchmarking is you actually, you actually get the results. You can take a look at what you're actually using. And what you could be saving by doing some pretty simple stuff. A lot of it's operational and maintenance stuff that you can just direct your current, you know, maintenance folks to do with no cost. Or if, if you see some things that are cost effective and worth doing. You know, then you can move to get a free energy audit for that building or a couple of buildings. And see what kind of, what kind of progress you could make on that in improving your bottom line in those buildings.
Right.
Okay. So any other questions?
I think we're pretty good on our part.
Okay. Again, I don't hesitate to give me a holler. If you leave here and go, damn, I wish I asked Dwyane Matt, you know? Just pick up the phone and call. If I'm not right there, I'll get right back to you. Just leave me a message. Just to the best time. Brian, we'll make sure that stuff comes over to you. And everything is on this resource site. There's all kinds of good stuff there. So make sure you have that. I'm going to save this presentation now as the PDF and send it over tonight to our clerk who I didn't see. I didn't see who you were. Madam clerk or Mr. Clerk. Hi. Great. I'll send that stuff over to you as well as this link again. And feel free to print it out and distribute it. And like I say, at any point, just, just please give me a call. And I'll, I'll stick with you. My time is your time. So I do have a Springer Spaniel who is insisting that, that I feed her. So to let you folks go off to dinner. If you haven't, and then unless you have other questions, I'll get out of your hair.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Really appreciate it.
Yep. You all take care and be well.
Thank you. You too.
Can we steal the question from the resident?
I suppose. Five minutes.
Okay. Aleah, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Um, just very logistical. Just earlier in the meeting, there were a couple of things that were said and I had no idea who said them. So I don't know if people remember, or if maybe someone's taking minutes that kind of has who's saying what. And I should just check with them after.
What do you ask?
Okay, um, earlier on when we were talking about, when you were talking about the Economic Development Committee idea, um, someone said how at the organizational meeting that Brian Johnson will appoint people to various committees.
That was Doug Cropper, Douglas Cropper.
Oh, Doug Cropper. Thank you so much. And then the one other thing was someone said that um, they remember there being a Economic Development Committee in the past.
No, it was a local development committee.
And that was Brian Johnson.
Oh, a local development committee. Thank you so much.
All right, move on.
Okay. Looks like we're gonna go to Walter Gerbo.
Mr. Gerbo? Um, if you could unmute yourself, you can go.
Can you hear me now?
You can.
Yes. Thank you for this time to talk. I'm afraid I'm talking about the same topic again that we have been bringing up. And that's the what we consider to be the very unfair charges for snow removal. We continue to feel that it was something that should have been, people should have been warned about. And we found that legally this should have been posted in a, a newspaper, a local newspaper for it to be legally effective. What concerned me from the very first one we spoke about this is
Fitzsimmons.
Uh, Mr. Fitzsimmons had said that back in, I believe it was 70 in the past, the town, the town had invoked some penalties for snow removal. And they went to the judge and the judge dismissed them. I guess probably in, in a similar situation where it was deemed unfair. So then the law, you, you change the law in the town so that we now there is no legal recourse. So I'm very skeptical about the legality of that or the integrity of that. Anyway, I'm just hoping, I, I know you've been saying that you want it to be fair. And I know a lot of you who are there, including Skip. Dedicated a lot of their time to this town and I'm appreciative of that. And we're here because it is a wonderful place to be. I'm just going to keep, we're going to keep campaigning. And there's a lot of people we're talking to who feel the same. I believe there's two people on the board now who also felt that this snow thing was, was not right. So I'm, I'm, I'm still have my hopes up that you're going to just turn that last those penalties into a warning and in the future charge a reasonable amount if you do have to shovel somebody's snow. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only other one I have is Sally Baker. If you can continue on. Sally, are you fine?
Um, Skip, I have nothing to add here. I've, I've done my bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, your tires are in.
Oh, thank you. Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. Although what's next?
That's it. All I have.
Um, just in terms of communications, I'm wondering if we want to send around an email to our, you know, to our mailchimp list about the results of the election?
Yes, send it around if you want to.
It's already, it's been in the papers. I don't think it's probably necessary, but.
I mean, people have said they would like us to communicate in a few more ways. So if.
Or communication is always better than less.
So I'm, I'm, I'm asking, or you know, I don't know what the official term is, but I recommend that we, we do that. And the more we use it, the more people will rely on. And then we can, you know, be communicating more openly with people. We'll avoid things like the snow removal situation. And so I think we, I think it would be good to get in a habit of using that.
Well, Robert already, already spoke to me while you were talking there that legally the way we did it was, was legal. So there is no, nobody that will come back on the village and say, you did it illegally. I'm going to sue you.
Right. I mean, there's evil and then there's like.
Better than legal.
Yeah.
You know, my, my theory.
Yeah.
My, my theory is that when we get back to where we can have meetings, if everybody had a problem or if they don't know what's going on, come to it and be, that's all there is to it. We have three people, four people out of 1,400 people. I'd rather see that fall out there overflowing. Every other meeting you go to or any other village or
Okay.
town or anything else, it's full.
And we are going back to regular meetings today.
Deborah, I'm supportive of more communication versus less. I think.
Okay. And actually you don't know this, Michelle, because this is your first meeting, but we have a protocol that in order to speak, you have to be recognized. So, so in the future, maybe just raise your hand. Yeah. Hang on one sec. And Tom wants to speak too? Okay. Okay. Mayor?
I'm going to speak. I thought we were done.
Okay. So Michelle, go ahead. Can you unmute yourself?
I've unmuted myself. I, the one point that I will make is that more communication is best. And whatever we can do to communicate to the residents of the village, I think is best.
Thank you. Tom Pano?
Uh, yes, I, I just need to clarify on the Climate Smart Community. Are we still, at the last meeting? Um, there was something about signing the resolution tonight. Is that still on?
We did it.
It's done. Okay. So I just want to clarify, there are several people who are on the task force who are at this meeting now. And so this is officially the first meeting of the Climate Smart Community Task Force. And we'll count this, the presentation that was arranged as being part of that meeting. So I just, I just wanted to confirm that, 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 that's all.
Thank you. And yay. Thank you, and yay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I uh, I'm gonna recommend that you send out an email, I'm gonna repeat that. I would like us to send out an email announcing the election results and also the meeting, the budget meeting. On uh, the fifth, the budget and the organizational meeting on the fifth.
It's all published, anyway.
That's not the point.
We'll do whatever we want to.
No, I can't do whatever I want to do, we're a board. I can only do what we all want to do.
Well, you know, that computer stuff doesn't mean anything to me.
I know, but you're now, you're going to be in.
Published and it's out there.
And are you saying you don't want to send the email? Um, that I would strongly recommend against that, because you're gonna run into problems like you have with the snow. Even though it was legal, we're not communicating in ways that people are receiving the information.
And they need to buy the paper.
We are in the twenty-first century, people.
It doesn't matter to me.
Right, it doesn't matter to you, but it matters to all those people who are on this meeting.
Indeed.
But can we, so.
I mean, personally, what's the harm in sending it and? If 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 we send smoke signals out, if we put banners down the street, if we do emails, if we send out letters. There's still gonna be, be people out there and say, I don't know, I never got it. So, you know what, kill them with kindness and knock on the door and leave a brochure on their door.
Why not? Why not?
Whatever we gotta do.
We are lucky, we have a clerk who's very comfortable with Mailchimp and. It's just an email box, it's what, it's a software we use to send.
It's like an email list. So all I do is put in the information that goes.
You're building an address file.
I think Mailchimp knows who looked at it though, correct?
It can tell you who received it.
Right, so if you choose to look at it, they're gonna know you looked at it. But that's, I never opened them up.
Okay, but, can I, but can I tell you, if we have that ability, people came here and said, well, we didn't know. You can look back there and say, oh, you opened that email, love, love, love.
Well, nobody's gonna have time for all that.
No, you don't have time for all that, but this is very normal.
We don't need to defend ourselves, we don't need to say to somebody like we sent it out, we do not need to defend ourselves.
Okay.
Against these people.
Okay, but I, against these people, these are the people you're representing, we are working for them.
Thank you. What are you, Ryan?
I said do whatever she gotta do, that's a waste, this is wasting time, either send it or you don't send it. I don't really care.
Great. Two things, the budget meeting and the election result, the budget organizational meeting.
And we're gonna do that in public?
Yes.
And we're gonna have limited, how are we gonna do that?
Well, I don't know, the, as far as I'm concerned, the organizational meeting, he's still mayor until he swears me in, so. Let's, you want that in public or you want?
Doesn't matter.
I just, we get right back, getting it in public, let's get this back over with.
So.
There's plenty of room out there. There's plenty of room out there.
So is the budget hearing done under Skip or under Brian?
No, it's under me.
I, wait, we're saying that we're, we need to keep doing Zoom, we cannot require people to come in during COVID, you can't.
They've gone to court and there, there's.
We can have miniature.
Yes, uh, you should probably, I think the protocol is is, and it depends how you wanna set it. You have to figure out how many people you can have reasonably socially distanced in that room. And then we would have to tell them if they want to come in person to notify Trish so that we didn't. If you have a budget hearing and thirty people want to come in in our capacity during COVID is reduced to fifteen. Then we can't have a meeting because we're depriving people from attendance at the meeting.
Right, so we're gonna need to use Zoom anyway.
The budget meeting we can do.
You can do in person, you can switch to an in-person component with a Zoom component. Um, an in-person component, the, the only thing I'll, I'll say at this point is if you get enough people that want to come and you don't have capacity, then technically you gotta reschedule.
I mean, a budget meeting on Zoom or whatever the hell this is.
You can go back to regular inviting people in person, limited attendance, first come, first served. In the, in the regular meeting hall, but keep a Zoom component to it, at least until, I mean, we, we still are under a state of emergency in this state.
Sorry, well, then that's the way we're doing it.
Um, I would like to make a request that we have a gentleman named Jeffrey Demoski of the Hudson Valley Energy. The Hudson Valley Energy come to speak to us about this CCA program, it's a shared service model for energy. Um, it would allow us to um. Tap, to get, we would go in with other communities in Columbia County. To get lower costs on electric from renewable sources. And it would bring it down to the same price or less than existing. Non-crene energy, non-sustainable energy, and it looks like a really interesting program. And this guy would present to us at either April's workshop meeting or May's workshop meeting. And um, if we do it in May, we get a little more time to let the community know about it. Uh, but it wouldn't change much, it would just be, um, we would go into the marketplace with the other, other uh, communities.
Aren't we in contact with, with Monolith or whoever bought Monolith now, the supplier energy?
Yeah, what happened with that?
Uh, I can give you an update, because Larry and I had a, a conference call. So the Monolith projects are under receivership, some of them are, and and the other ones are still being administered. Um, there's a company that the receiver brought in, which is GMES Solar, I believe is, is their, their, their name. And we had a meeting and we explained to them and I passed on all the prior clerks' information that we gathered. To boil it down, as you know, Monolith was going to reserve energy for us and we would, in a solar field, and we would get credits. Those credits were never applied to appropriate accounts, they're mismatched. And then they would bill us and all that got jumbled up, and and the receiver, and the new company acknowledges Monolith did that poorly. So we gave them uh, the ability to research our accounts. And they're in the process now, they're gonna do a full historical analysis of the payments, the credits, the energy earned, and then they'll present that to us. Going right back, and then we will have a reconciliation. And they have assured us that they will want to come up with a plan to apply credits that we haven't gotten, reconcile those accounts. And come up with a plan going forward where we get uh, good energy credits, which they represented would be beneficial to the village. Because Larry challenged them, we've been with Monolith for a period of years and haven't seen any benefit out of it. And they said, well, it's our goal to fix what was broken under Monolith and going forward, get the village the credits that it needs.
It sounded to me like it was around sixty thousand dollars.
Could be, could be, but yes, so we are, our wagon is hitched, so to speak, to, to the Monolith projects for our municipal accounts as of right now. But I don't know, you're, you're talking for outside residential.
This is for residents and I don't think it's in conflict. Um, and the, one of the good things about it is, I'm saying, is it gets us immediately fifteen hundred points on the CEC. Program if we go into the marketplace.
Now, so the resident would have to choose to, to join.
Yeah, it, basically what it does, it's my understanding, is that it's, it's, you get a price for this um. A hundred percent or whatever percent renewable energy, and that's the default energy source that NICE serves people. Nothing changes about NICE, like people still get their energy from NICE. Um, but um, that's the default, people can choose to opt out of it, but they would have to take a step to opt out of it.
So, so why aren't we involved if it's, if it's a resident, if it's an individual choice?
You, you'll have to ask, you know, I mean.
We mean the village.
Right, I mean, I, I think the village can choose to opt out of it like any resident. Um, it, it, um, and it may not be, you know, the, like what Monolith comes back with or whoever this agency, this receivership is. You know, it, it could be comparable, work better, I don't know, but the idea would be to bring this man in to. Tell us a little more about the program and he could probably answer those questions.
Give him five minutes.
It's not gonna be a year for workshop, I want year for workshop.
The May workshop?
Possibly the May, if we get what I want done and be able to workshop.
Just start a public meeting, five minutes.
Yeah, it can be.
And you get your points and uh.
No, we don't get points for having him talk.
No, oh, you can, you can talk at the, have him sign up for the regular meeting, because the workshops are for us.
Okay, so the regular meeting is in May. We'll see if he.
Workshops are.
So wouldn't be for the village, because we're gonna stick with the mall, at least, and then this person is.
If it's the same, if it's the same program, the village of Kinderhook, it either passed the law that allowed them to do it. And it's like a power uh, cooperative that gives a lower rate and the village becomes part of that cooperative. And you're, you're then have the buying power of your village with other municipalities to buy power at a lower rate. And you offer it to your residents, and as, as Deborah said, they, they don't have to buy that power that you've purchased or leveraged through the cooperative for them at that rate. They can elect to go with whatever the standard rate is or another program.
So we've been through this before, remember many years ago, we kept having people walk in the door and try to sell us stuff. And I was the one doing all the research, and it turned out that what these companies were doing was charging a lower rate for like six, eight months.
Yeah.
And then, so I'm gonna vote against any of that.
Well, I'm gonna recommend that you actually recognize that if you're different year, this stuff has advanced considerably and at least keep an open mind.
Well. Only if they have a tracker that we can research.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I know, men, so many people got burned, the city of Hudson got really burned.
Yeah.
And um. Yeah, so I wanted to find all that out.
Yeah, well, that's.
I'm gonna be very cautious of, you know.
Two things, wow. Um, Rob, one, just following up, did you communicate with Brian Dean, should I communicate with him?
Um, they had a communication with, at this point, no, they're not developing anything further, because the Lee doesn't have any open permits, they just have one house constructed. Um, and they're working with Lee now and our engineer George Schmidt on some grading issues up there, left over from the old subdivision. So they're not really in a position to investigate opportunities going forward, so they gotta fix the problems they have. So they're not there, they're just not there yet.
Okay. Um, and then just following up about Keyvans, did you, were you gonna talk with Kevin?
Doesn't, no, there's no sense in talking to you.
What's the update on that?
Keyvans gets the foreclosure.
Okay.
They're first, we're second, so it was a public safety thing, it's the reason we took the house down. And we're gonna get rid of the tires out down there, because it's a public safety hazard. It's on our nickel.
Okay, um, Faith Benson was offered to draft an anti-hate resolution. Um, if the board is interested in that, there's been a surge of hate crimes in recent years and. They do say that the worst thing to do is nothing, um, I know you said you take care of our own. Um, but I, um, it's recommended to, that it's, it's not a bad thing and it might be a very good thing.
It's not a bad thing, except you're giving those people everything that they ever wanted, they want recognition and that's what that's given them. Um, I, I'm sure the county's got the resolution, does the town have one?
I, I know the county passed one, I'm not, I don't think the town of Claver passed one.
I don't want, I, I don't want to give them any more recognition than we've got, we, I mean, we've got our police force, Belmont can take care of itself. I don't remember anything that's not allowed in Belmont, everybody knows that. We're not going to allow it to happen. I don't, you know, the bigger deal we make out of this thing, the more it's gonna enhance it.
Okay. Um, okay. And then, um, actually I had a question for Sally, if you're still on. Um, I noticed that I, I understand. That we didn't get them, the Main Street revitalize, the, the revi- revitalization grant, actually I might have it wrong, the name of it. Stabilization Grant, that's it, for the Hilltop Hotel, and I was wondering if there was any. Feedback from the grantor that would be helpful for the village to know about, about that and why we didn't get the grant.
Uh, because PB Inc. withdrew the application. Before the adjudication, and that was based on the fact that. Nathaniel Williams had an offer for sale. Which then put the grant in a situation that there was gonna be a change, a possible change of owner. So we were no longer eligible to apply for the grant, so we sent a formal withdrawal of the application.
Oh, okay, thanks. That's all I got. Oh, and can we, yeah, actually, the rental registry, um, I have a, can we, can we put that? Top of the list, I have a checklist, can we get back to that as a meeting?
Yeah, I think we're done trying to burn Sally, so we can probably get back to something that we need to get back to.
Well, do you want to address that? Directly, what you just said? What is it, you just said we're done trying to burn Sally?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
We spent four months trying to, trying to take the ball grant away from him and.
No, okay, you want to talk, let's talk about that.
No, well, we don't have to talk about it now.
Well.
It's late, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make his last meeting, so.
Alright, but.
We can wait for my first meeting.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that, okay.
Sounds good, thank you, everybody, do we need to close this in any formal way?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Okay, good night, everybody. Sorry, Michelle, didn't see your hand till too late.